Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 16, 2024 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us. Ms. LaMagna, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Paris?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the September 18, 2024 City Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Paris and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero at this time. We will hear from our city manager regarding our agenda approval.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, add item 8J, City Manager's Office, mayoral Zone Support Fund Distribution, approving the distribution of $1,032 from Commissioner Paula Reed to Midtown Community Development Corporation to provide support for the books for the children's Christmas party. Add item 8K, City Attorney's Office Resolution confirming and extending a declared state of emergency for an additional seven-day period. Add 12, a Deputy City Manager Fire Chief Drew Drisco will provide a presentation on the Hurricane Milton in the City of Daytona Beach pre, during, and post responses. That concludes the agenda changes.
I'm going to accept the agenda with the set changes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item 6A is a proclamation for the Red Ribbon Week for Volusia Young Marines.
And that's me. Nice handshake. Beautiful handshake. Good evening. In recognition of Red Ribbon Week, whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marine Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Cameron, a Drug Enforcement Administration Agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, whereas October 23 through the 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear red ribbons to show their support of a drug-free environment. Now, therefore, I Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the City of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim October 23 through the 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Daytona Beach. Let's take a photo. Here, can I get between you two? You believe it?
I guess.
All right, yeah, you believe it, you're the leader. And, uh, thank you. And these two young people have two of the best handshakes in town. Don't go behind it.
Okay, we're going to move on to our second presentation. Item 6B is a Public Works Department Beautification Tree Advisory Board Awards. A member of the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to present.
Mayor Henry, members of the commission, Mr. Viecher. My name is Sharon Wetherholz. I live at 3 Granville Circle. I represent Zone One on the Beautification Board, and it is my pleasure to scour the community to find award winners. Sometimes you're successful and sometimes you're not. The Board has selected for the commercial award, the Euphoria Bar and Grill at 1130 South Ridgewood as the commercial beautification award winner for the month of October 2024. This establishment has resurrected itself. It's in an area that has been challenged as far as care, and they have brought it back to life like the phoenix. The Euphoria Bar and Grill offers great food by day and exciting entertainment by night, and I guess this weekend's going to be pretty hot, so it's a good time to go. The Bar and Grill is an ideal place to hold venues. It rents out areas for the community of about 200 people. The types of trees and shrubs used for the beautification are crotons, foxtail ferns, purple heart, robalini palms, kunji palms, live oak, and drosinia dragon tree. Due to circumstances beyond everybody's control, our award winner was not able to come, so you don't have to...
He did show.
No kidding. This is the hardest man, okay, to do it. This is AJ, I believe, or Arthur?
Either one.
Leonardo?
Yes.
I'm so glad to see you. This is my surprise today, too. Mayor Henry, you gotta go.
All right.
All right.
This reads, "Certificate of Achievement. May it be known that this certificate has been presented to Euphoria Bar and Grill for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification. City of Daytona Beach, Florida. Signed, myself, Mayor Derrick L. Henry, and Zone One Commissioner Monica Paris." Keep up the great work, and the city manager who was just whaling on how great the food is.
Oh, yes. Thank you, guys.
So we're going to move on to item number seven, which is citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is Evelyn Rodriguez, who's speaking on 8I and 8C, and on deck is John Nicholson.
I just had a comment that this 8I is one of the property purchases that you guys just approved for CRA. 11C, it's the other property. I was wondering if that should be pulled and put in the administrative section together with the other property purchase.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson.
He's all right right now.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Two things, since Jenny Nazak is not here. Under E is trimming of palms. She has this thing about trimming palms in a nine-three configuration. I would ask you that we ask or demand whoever does our palms that we cut them in a nine-three, all right? It's something that she promotes big time, and I think personally, it looks more attractive than those little twigs at the top when they leave it one stream at the very, very top. And secondly, with the FDOT, I don't know what they're going to give us for the maintenance of whatever properties, whether it's A1A, Bevel, or whatever. I know that A1A is not being well-maintained, so I'm asking that we make sure, because we're not doing it in-house anymore, we're fishing it out. So whoever does the work that FDOT is paying to be done, does that work? Thank you.
Dad used to call that a mushroom trim as opposed to an alfalfa trim. Mushroom, straight up. So we understand, it's a good cut.
That was my only other speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Strickland, second from Commissioner May. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
When I move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings and quasi-judicial hearings. Item 9A is the City Attorney's Office repealing Article 6 of Chapter 26 of the City Code relating to rental of residential dwelling units. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending City Code of Orances, repealing Article 6 of Chapter 26 of the Code consisting of Sections 26 through 291 through 26-304 relating to the rental residential dwelling units, reserving Sections 26-291 through 26-304 for future use, repealing all orances or parts of orances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, six zero. Mr. Mayor is out.
We're going to move on to item 9B, which is Growth Management Planning Department Affordable Housing Setbacks Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending Section 6.22 of the Land Development Code relating to affordable housing to modify the minimum side yard setbacks of lots that are 50 feet wide for single-family detached residential dwellings that qualifies as affordable housing, repealing all orances or parts of orances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, it's Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. The best I can say is unintended consequences, all right? You remember you had a gentleman a couple of months ago about the property behind him was empty, and we vacated it to the two property owners on either side, but it was needed for Florida Power and Light to get in to do the repair work on their electrical property. So it created a problem for him because they were going through his yard now to get to it. The same thing happens with this. If the setback, if it's a 5-foot lot, and you have a 5-foot setback on either lot, it's a 10-foot. A normal overhang is two and a half feet, so then you reduce that to a 5-foot space for any vehicle for repairs or for whatever to get back. So I'm asking that you think about the concept of a 5-foot on one side and less than a 5-foot on the other, so that every so many houses, there's enough space so that those houses can get a vehicle, for whatever reason, to the back of the property, because you're ending up with too many tiny spaces. It comes before the planning board all the time. Somebody on the board always asks about how far apart that's going to be and why do we need to cram them, so many houses together, all right? So it does come up quite often, both at the county level and at the city level. So I'm asking you to take a look at this very carefully before you pass it, to make sure you're not creating something that could be a problem in the future. Thank you.
And that was my only speaker on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any questions or comments? All right, here are none. Those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9C, it's a redevelopment and neighborhood services Daytona Beach Essential Housing Opportunity Program Trust Fund. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, creating Chapter 28 of the City Code entitled Community Services, creating Article 1 of Chapter 28, consisting of Sections 28-1 through 28-25, entitled Essential Housing Opportunity Act, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, and we'll take a second from Commissioner Strick. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We're approving a trust fund with no money in it. What are we planning on doing? Am I on? Okay.
This is a bare-bones ordinance. It creates the framework for later changes to this chapter or the adoption of resolutions by the City Commission establishing specific policies that provide for funding and expenditures from the fund.
Okay, and what are we planning on moving forward? Are we just going to approve an empty trust fund?
Yes, the, as Attorney Growth stated, this is the platform for us as staff to bring back to you all how the linkage fee will be put to place or how we will take funds, different entities, different municipalities take money from their general funds or they set aside funds based off the linkage fee. The staff with the Attorney's Office has looked at our plan from the Florida Housing Coalition that presented to the Affordable Housing Group. I think Commissioner May talked about it, so we'll be bringing their recommendations back to you all of how we put funds into this if you all approve it.
Okay, and how long till this will be brought back?
Do you remember which date we said we were going to bring it?
I don't.
Commissioner, not Commissioner Thomas, Ken, do you, Florida Housing Trust, did we, did we get a date yet? Are we going to bring, we haven't decided what date they're going to come back and present to us?
December now, because of the storm, so December.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, yes.
And I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Father Phil.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Simply is who pays, who gets, who decides, all right? Who's going to pay for this? So we as citizens, we get it off scot-free. We're not going to pay for anything. It's just that anybody that comes into our community, we're going to zap them, we're going to charge them. So, welcome to our community, and we'll put our hand out demanding that they pay for what we have not done, all right? I don't like that concept whatsoever. Linkage fees, I don't like the concept of linkage fees only, all right? As a source, yes. Only, no. I know Faith Group wanted 20% on linkage fees, all right? You're talking $4,000, $5,000, $7,000 for a new residence. That's not chicken feed, folks. That's real money. So you won't give a dime, but you're asking them to give $7,000 or $10,000 depending on the value of their home. That's a lot of money. So we have to look at linkage fees carefully, and it's not just homes, it goes to businesses as well. And we absolutely need businesses, because businesses pay our taxes to keep our individual taxes down. So I'm asking you to pass this, obviously, we need it. I wish that the DEXA study had been a correct study, so we could find out who needs it and where the money should go. We've been looking apparently at 16 years of this, and we still don't know who needs it and where it needs to be spent. So, yes, I'm for it, but there are a lot of questions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Father Phil, and on deck is Eddie Lake.
Good evening, Mayor Henry, City Commissioners, City Manager Viecher, and our city staff. I'm Father Philly Gito from Our Lady of Lords, a longtime member of the faith organization. We have come so far that tonight you're voting on an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Our first step homeless shelter with the support of you, our Daytona Beach Commissioners and Mayor Henry, could help so many more people if there were an affordable housing for residents to go. I know your hearts, and I know you, and they are all in the right place, and I know that by your commitment in serving our city, and I am grateful. At the same time, I know we can do so much more. Just one logistical question. We heard Commissioner May state that the Affordable Housing Advisory Board is working on leakage fees, and you were given a presentation. Thank you, Commissioner Cantu, for asking that question about how we're going to fund this. The minutes from those meetings are not yet on your website, and so I do ask if we could get a copy, I would appreciate it. I've heard some of you say that we could just use money from the American Rescue Plan to start the trust fund. I haven't heard how much money that is, but it sounds like a great start. However, I want to emphasize the need for a dedicated funding source. As I said two weeks ago at the meeting, in Hillsborough County, our sister organization got their county council to fund an Affordable Housing Trust Fund of $10 million from their general fund. And that sounds great, but guess what happened? When new council members got elected the following year, they reduced the fund to only 2 million. Currently, many council members are trying to eliminate the fund completely. We can't have that here. Another example is our own First Step Shelter. We helped the City Commission and Mayor Henry to get a commitment of $400,000 a year for five years for the First Step Shelter from the county. The current county council didn't renew that commitment, and as I said, don't worry, we are working on getting it back into the budget for next year and a 400,000 contribution for this year. But we shouldn't have to go through this every single year. We need a dedicated funding source. With a dedicated funding source, it will be much harder to cut the needed funding for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We look forward to seeing a linkage fee on your agenda soon. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Eddie Lake, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Good evening. This is David Spurkall. Appreciate you so very, very much. I'm Eddie Lake, Senior Pastor of Allen Chapel with AMI Church here in Daytona Beach, 580 George Ingram Boulevard. And me, too, our congregation is feeling passionate about this affordable housing issue. Upon arriving here seven months ago, I, too, dealt with trying to find a place to live that was affordable for me and my family. And I believe that every family, every child especially, ought to have an affordable place, a safe place to live. This is so important. Our community needs to make sure that our children are safe, because we know that it helps increase graduation rates. We know that it helps secure what is happening with the lives of our children and the more stable housing that we can have. It even helps with those with disabilities to fully support and contribute to our society. And for those people that are dealing with recovery, they can focus on rehabilitation. And most of all, for our seniors, they can thrive in their golden years. Now, according to the latest NEXUS study, one in four of our wage earners in Daytona Beach make less than $15,000 a year. I think I don't have to repeat the fact that every one of you know that affordable housing is needed, and so I'm thankful that this is a part of the agenda today and that you'll be voting on this. And my prayer and concern is that, as Commissioner mentioned, we have to find a stable way to sustain this and fund it. And so I ask that you come back with a plan of action where we can stabilize and fund this Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As faith, our justice ministry, our 30 congregations, we hope to see a draft of the ordinance in a soon-coming agenda. For example, if we would have had this Affordable Housing Trust Fund in place at just $1 per square feet with the linkage fees, the facility at Amazon would have contributed $3 million. And so this is important, and so I ask that you vote yes, and I ask that we come back and find a way to not only fund it, but to sustain it. It's my heart, and I pray that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck Evelyn Rodriguez.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I'm very much in favor of this, and I'm also going to start a rumor that I was going to follow up on with public records request, so I'm hoping somebody else will pick it up and do it. We went to a planning board meeting, and for a project, I believe it was on Strickland Range Road, Mark Watts was the attorney, and Nan Chabalha was the owner, and they agreed to put $75,000 into a trust fund. So I'm hoping somebody wants to dig through that and see... What?
Oh, that definitely happened.
It did? Okay, so you've got some money, right?
I don't know if he gave us the money, but he definitely agreed to do it.
Okay, so that would be a good thing to start to seed money for this, so there you go. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Evelyn Rodriguez.
Evelyn Rodriguez, Molly Road, Daytona Beach. I'm opposed to this item 9C. Stop enabling lazy people to become lazier. At the last commission meeting, I spoke about the many people that I have met here who have come from other countries. Many have earned a degree in their country, but the degree is not recognized here, so they are forced to work for very low wages. What I didn't get to say before the buzzer sounded was that no one of those people, in fact, no one, in the 40 years plus that I've been here, has ever told me that they have never can find affordable housing. I know you weren't impressed with my past experience, but there was a woman who moved here in the 70s. She had two children, a boy and a girl. She was a single mother with no car. She didn't sit back and take public assistance, no. Every week, every weekday morning, she would ride the Voltran bus with her baby daughter to drop her off at daycare, then she would take a different bus across the town to the office where she worked. On 5:00 PM came around, and she did the same in reverse order. Her son was a latchkey kid in elementary school. Her children grew up and both graduated from Mainland High School. The boy, who is my nephew, went into the Marines. The little girl, who is my niece, became a nurse, actually a surgical tech. Like her mother, my niece became a single mom right after high school, and like her mother, she didn't sit back and live off of the government. She worked at McDonald's while attending DBCC. When she was able to find a better-paying job, she got her own apartment. After she earned her certification, she moved into a nicer apartment. You see, that's the way you do it. You work, you budget your earnings, you save what you can until you are able to find an affordable place. Yes, you pull yourself up by your own bootstraps and make a better life for you and your family. You don't sit back and wait for the government to give it to you. Another issue I find is that the law has given apartment managers the authority to decide what a person can and can't afford. If I have the money for the down payment and I want to pay one-third of my salary for rent, who are they to demand to see my 1040 tax record and say that I can't afford it? Maybe Mr. Hardy Smith should lobby the Florida Legislature to prohibit these management companies from deciding what you can and can't do. Oh, by the way, my Christian Bible tells me that Jesus directed the church and not Caesar and the God. Caesar and the government to take care of the poor and the widows and the fatherless.
Yeah, go ahead, because we know people need affordable housing, and we know that Jesus thinks they need affordable housing.
Some of us just have a different Bible.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I will fill this out for you for the record. Excuse me, I'm Lori Galouli. I am the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, Greater Volusia County. We work very closely, we work very closely with Commissioner Reed on a beautification project in the city. We currently have four homes under construction. We are building 12 houses on Alabama Street. And I just want to make a point about the people who desperately need affordable housing in this community. The people that we work with at Habitat for Humanity purchase their homes, we provide a zero interest mortgage that is based on 25% of their income. The people that we work with work in essential jobs in this community. They drive school buses, they work as patient techs, they work as CNAs in the hospitals and nursing homes. They work in hospitality, trucking, construction. They are not making enough money to afford housing. I believe that a vibrant city requires housing in every level of economics, and it is very... It's incumbent, I believe, upon, yes, the government, the nonprofits as well, but also private construction. And in order for the city to incentivize for-profit building, you're going to have to have something like a trust fund in order to encourage that. With the nonprofits, you also have faith community, you have other organizations in the community that are building affordable housing. Excuse me, I'm just getting emotional about the concept of who we're building with and who we're taking care of in our community. So in order to have that vibrant community, you have to consider all phases of your population. In order to incentivize for-profit building, you need to have something like a trust fund that you're looking at. How are you going to fund it, Commissioner Cantu, is a great question, and that's going to be important as we move forward. But just get it on the books and let's start working on it. And we're happy to help you at Habitat for Humanity. The nonprofits, the other organizations in this community are always going to do what they're set to do. That's our mission, that's what we believe. But you've got to incentivize for-profit building in order to help us, because you need more affordable housing than we can build for you. So it's really vital that you get behind this. And I know I've heard you all talk about it out in the community and in private, so let's do it. Let's get it on the books and then let's talk about the details after. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry I'm usually not this emotional. Sorry.
We know and we appreciate your great work throughout the community, but most of the folks that you construct houses for, do you find that they work?
Oh, yes, sir, that's what I'm saying. They're driving school buses, they're working as CNAs, patient techs, they work in the hospitality industry, they work in trucking. They are people that have roots here in this community, but they are paying like 50% or more of their income on housing. And this is why, let's take something like the hurricane that we just had, right? That's nobody's fault, right? But if they work in a job where they don't get paid for time off, or they work in a hotel that gets closed for two weeks, that can so quickly put them on the verge of homelessness because they're spending so much of their income. This is why everything else is such a challenge for them. And one of the speakers before pastor talked about the impact to children. I want to tell you just a quick story. When I was hired, the former mayor of Ormond Beach, David Hood, was the president of the Habitat Board and he hired me. And he asked me to get every statistic that we could find about what it costs in order to be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment in this community, in our general area. I got lucky because there had just been a census. I was hired back in 2001, so there had just been a census in 2000. And there was a lot of great statistics. But during that same time, I met with the homeowner that was our soon-to-be next homeowner, the house was just built, and I was sitting with her to go over the closing. We sell the house at no profit to our homeowners, and then we provide a zero interest mortgage that they pay back. So they're immediately improving their situation, they're improving the future for their children, and then as they're paying their mortgage payments, they're building equity. But what they're also doing is helping them, they join all the other donors in providing the money, because we just use that cash flow to build more homes. So they're joining our donors and volunteers and supporters in providing that opportunity to everyone who comes after them. So I had all these statistics that David Hood wanted, and he was right. When we talked to the Rotary Club, we needed to know those statistics. But in talking with this homeowner, I asked her if she, you know, was getting excited, and what about her 11-year-old son? This woman worked at the original Ormond Hospital in housekeeping. She had an 11-year-old son, she's a single mom, and she was also caring for her elderly mom who had beginnings of dementia. And she looked at me without any drama or any agenda, and she said, Lori, he is so excited, my son is making a list of all the school friends he wants to invite to our new home. And she said, he's been too ashamed to bring anybody to our home where we live now. Because she was in a place where she was paying high rent, that the landlord was not keeping it up, the stove didn't work, things like that. It was substandard. That child's life was changed by affordable housing, that opportunity for that mother. That mother still works at Advent Health, she's had a few promotions, her son now has a graduate degree, has a master's degree. And his whole attitude, attitude, outlook on his life and his family's worth in this community was changed by affordable housing.
I want to thank you for doing the work that Jesus calls us to do.
I'm very grateful every day, Mayor, for the job that I have in this community.
Thank you.
Thank you for your longtime support. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Some people just talk about Jesus and other people do what Jesus commands us to do. Thank you for being a doer in the community.
I have no other speakers.
No other speakers? Okay. Do we have a motion?
We do have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second by Commissioner Strickland.
And a motion, we had a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 6-1.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9D. It is the Growth Management Planning Department, Valencia Square Plan Development Redevelopment. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Co. to rezone 3.73 plus or minus acres of property located at 544 Orange Avenue from redevelopment midtown neighborhood transition mixed use, that's RDM 5, to Plan Development Redevelopment, PDRD, approving the Valencia Square Plan District Agreement to allow for development of a mixed-income multifamily housing complex project with 62 residential units and associated site improvements, authorizing the mayor and the city clerks to execute the agreement, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion, we'll take a motion from Commissioner Cantu. Did you have a second? Or Commissioner May, we'll take the second.
And I have Mr. Rob Merrill here for questions.
No questions for Mr. Merrill? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 10, which is our introduction of ordinances. Item 10A is the Growth Management Planning Department, Cornerstone Plan Development General. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Co. to rezone 22.71 plus or minus acres of property located at the southwest corner of LPJ Boulevard and North Williamson Boulevard from Plan Development General to Plan Development General, approving the Cornerstone Plan District Agreement combining and unifying the Cornerstone Office Park planned commercial development and the Cornerstone Exchange Plan Development for commercial developing, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, approving the preliminary plat, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? Okay, the public hearing and final action is set for November 6. Okay, we're going to move on to item 11A. Item 11, excuse me, which are administrative items. Item 11A is the City Manager's Office, it's the Downtown Development Authority Appointments. This is a resolution. A resolution appointing two members to the Downtown Development Authority Board for three-year terms and providing an effective date. So this is appointing two members to the DDA, one for a term ending June 30th, 2027, and one term ending June 30th, 2025. The term of Commissioner Quanita May expired and she would like to be reappointed. One other vacancy that we have, we have four applications. So I'm going to ask you guys to vote for one of the four, and if you'll please put your name at the top where it says name. And after we do the vote, I'll ask that one of you make a motion to appoint them to the board. So Paula Reed was Kenneth Hunt. Stacy Cantu was Jack White. Danette Henry is Kenneth Hunt. I believe this is Mayor Henry is Teresa Lieberman. Quanita May was Scott Lawson. Ken Strickland was Ken Hunt. And Monica Paris was Scott Lawson.
Ken Hunt?
Sure.
Three.
Ken Hunt. So if I can get one of you to make a motion to reappoint Quanita May and...
Ken Hunt.
Ken Hunt?
I have a motion from Commissioner Strickland and a second from Commissioner Reed. Those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Moving on to item 11B, it's the Redevelopment and Neighborhood Services. This is to approve two contracts for purchase of four adjacent parcels. This is a resolution. A resolution approving separate contracts with Investor Groups Inc. and Mr. Irving White, providing for the city's purchase of ING's and Mr. White's adjoining lots located at the southwest corner of Dr. Mary McCloud Bethune Boulevard and DeSoto Street, in consideration of the city's payment of $871,000 and the city's conveyance of two lots each to ING and Mr. White, authorizing and redirecting the city manager... Um, excuse me, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the contracts and take such action as may be necessary or prudent in their implementation and providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second.
And I don't have any speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor?
All right. All right, no questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Moving on to item 11C, it's Utilities Department, Joe Dirt Inc. This is Wet Slime Sludge Hauling Contract. This is a resolution. A resolution accepting the bid of Joe Dirt Inc. for the hauling of wet slime sludge at a rate of $31.20 per ton for a three-year term with option to renew for two additional terms of one year, authorizing expenditures of up to $860,000 for contract services for fiscal year 24-25, authorizing the city manager to make expenditures for the contract services in future years subject to budgeting and appropriation, authorizing the city manager to exercise the city's renewal options, authorizing the return of the bid security of all unsuccessful bidders, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Paris and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. This motion carries, 7-0.
Okay, we're going to move on to item which is 12A, which is the presentation from Chief Driscoll to the commission before the commission make their comments.
Good evening, Drew Driscoll, Deputy City Manager and Fire Chief. I wanted to take a moment and review some of city staff's action surrounding Hurricane Milton. As we know, Hurricane Milton made landfall as a category three storm in the west coast area of Siesta Key. As across the state, it brought forward 62 mile an hour winds to our area with a maximum hurricane-force gust of 83 miles an hour. At the Bethune Point Water Treatment Plant, we registered 15 inches of rain. If that's not enough, we have to also consider the rain that fell in the days leading up, already saturating the ground, preventing it from absorbing. And when we think about that rainfall in such a short period of time, we have the freshwater flooding that helps overwhelm our stormwater system. And if, to add insult to injury, then we face a high tide at the most inconvenient time along with a storm surge, preventing those freshwater floodwaters to leave those areas and go into the Halifax River as they're supposed to. As we know, when the tide is tide, the water has nowhere to go, and we see the results of that time and time again. I could probably spend an hour mentioning all the efforts of city staff along with yourselves, but I just want to highlight from some of our departments, just to offer to you, but also offer to our citizens listening. For Communications Department, we could turn off that slideshow for a moment, right there, perfect. For Communications Department, over 467 social media posts, city alerts, and even flyers that our police department took door to door. Social media alone, that's over 673 contacts our reach to the community. Stormwater and utility, days before the storm and continuing... 673,000 was our reach, yes. For stormwater utilities, days before the storm and continuing throughout. Ponds and ditches, even some private ditches, were drained down and cleared. Extra pumps and generators were ordered from state resources, including a Tiger Dam that we ordered to help prevent flooding at the Brandon Water Treatment Plant, I'm sorry, Bethune Point. For Public Works, within the first hours following the storm, their push team began clearing the roadways, and that was accomplished in less than 24 hours. That's important because we need the first responders to be able to move about. Our street signage marking contractor, they were out marking flooded streets, marking the intersections that lost power for their traffic signals immediately the days that followed. They also did a, Public Works also did a city facility property assessment documenting for $1 million in damage. That's just a preliminary number, there's still a lot of estimates that have to be done. One of the bravest acts for Public Works was actually our generators. Valor and City Hall are critical infrastructure pieces to our city's network. In the middle of the wind and rain, the city electrician working on those units just to keep us alive. And that comes to our IT department. To keep our infrastructure up and running when we need it the most, I saw them do creative things, shed loads, rewire batteries, all just to keep our system alive so we could communicate. so we could communicate. Parks and Rec, they provided emergency food and sheltering for our most vulnerable that we evacuated from the floodwaters. They also will be a big part of the process as we hope to open a disaster recovery center in agreement with FEMA in the coming days. Permits and licensing. By Air and Land, they did damage assessment within 24 hours. That's important because that damage assessment number, that dictates what triggers FEMA's efforts to respond to our area. The Police Department, over 1,000 calls for service, over 200 high-water rescues. They're out there enforcing curfew orders, protecting our homes and businesses, and providing traffic control at the intersections without power. The Fire Department, nearly 800 calls for service within 24 hours, a normal day's 70 calls. We worked alongside our police department partners in evacuating residents from high waters while still responding to life-critical emergency medical calls and fires that occurred in the middle of the storm. Emergency management fielded hundreds of citizen phone calls and calls from the field, coordinating resource requests for the county, state, and federal government, and providing department-by-department executive advisories that you should have received so you have that consolidated source to know what's going on in addition to the weather advisories. City Hall, they didn't get out scot-free either. We have to do emergency declarations. We have to send up, set up the funding mechanisms necessary so the operational staff could timely procure the items necessary. And of course, the City Manager's Office conducting the orchestra of city staff during the storm response. Externally, Volusia County has been with us throughout this event. Timely coordination, timely information, supporting our recovery efforts. And of course, the countless organizations that we just even saw Monday beginning the recovery by distributing those essential items our residents need. Lastly, our city commission. And I should be flipping through this whole presentation, but I'll go real quick afterwards, I promise. Our city commission. Throughout the storm, we received hundreds of phone calls and emails from your constituents. We had a live play-by-play what was going on throughout the city through you. The social media posting, both pre and post-storm, I have to believe that your constituents that follow your post and your phone calls and emails are well-informed. And then boots on the ground, I think is, the winds haven't even receded, and we began doing tours throughout the city and throughout our zones to better understand the damage that we face and what the needs in the coming days will be for our residents. As a historic storm, by all accounts, in my time, I think the wind speed was double of what we faced out of previous storms. I keep saying that it'll take days, weeks, and months to recover for our residents and businesses because it will. We have seen the tears and felt the pain of our residents as we toured the city, and that frustration because they just got back into that home, and here it is again. Mother Nature's wrath has put her fury down on us and other communities throughout Volusia County. We're not alone in this. But I'll tell you, I think Mayor Henry and I might have been driving around. What the neatest thing I've saw was neighbors helping neighbors. That real sense of community that helped, and is the magic to help us restore and recover. You go to the recovery center that we had on Monday, just random people helping out that weren't affected or weren't affected as much. City staff, I know my staff alone, we have several firefighters with damage to their homes, and the staff came together to try to at least give them some sense of normalcy and recovery. I'll go through the slideshow that I was supposed to go through. It'll be real quick, I promise. Sandbag distribution, and we didn't even mention that. 50,000 sandbags were given out through our Public Works Department. For information, we mentioned this, the multiple posts that the city put out across all of our platforms. It's not just Facebook, Instagram, it's Nextdoor and the City Alerts. I was even on national news. How about that, celebrity in your midst? Oh, I gotta take some credit. But I'm not on the news just for my own fun and ego. We're trying to inform as many of our citizens as possible what we're witnessing, what we're seeing going on. You've received these weather advisories and also the executive advisories we spoke about. Social media. These aren't the city's social media pages in front of us, these are your pages. This is you all out there trying to inform our residents what's going on. Pre-storm preparation and planning. Fire Department, the EOC, the Police Department, Utilities, Public Works, they were all a part of that preparation process. If we're not able to sustain, how are we gonna serve the community? Oftentimes, the Fire Department, during certain events, we might have to shut down due to wind speeds. We don't do that out of fear. We run into burning buildings for fun. We do that because if we hurt our people and our resources, we have to think about the marathon of recovery. So we take that small time, and when the winds recede, we're back out there again. Areas impacted. I feel like we could have shown this in the slideshow in Ian. But the reality is the city, along with the Army Corps of Engineers study that's hopefully coming shortly, we're trying to do the good work and try to bring some reprieve, even if not eliminating totally. Here we have sections of Beach Street. Again, Beach Street. There's Bellevue and Nova Road. The manager, I think he took this on the right from Fairway Estates. Again, Magnolia, Beach Street. Beach Street, I'd asked some, anyone that knows, but my feedback from some of the property owners along Beach Street was inches into the property, not as bad, but still flooded. Fire station, we lost a portion of our roofs, several tiles, I'm not gonna play this video. Here's Nova Road Canal. You see along Nova Road right there. You could start to make out Public Works Facility in the upper portion of the screen. Here's our Public Works Facility. Those are the people that are going out there and helping with this recovery effort. Again, our field depot. Our next field depot is going out to LPGA by the stadium. Here we see, this is Fairway Estates. In this area, I wanna say it's about 1:00 in the afternoon the day after the storm. Just to, I think this video will pan shortly. Bevel Road, the church that we all know for neighborhood watch meetings, all suffered the same flooding as we looked down into Midtown, which is also flooded. Bethune-Cookman allotted debris damage. We had flooding along MMB. And then our rescues recovery effort, our police department staffed with an ALS paramedic from the Fire Department pulling people out of the floodwaters. They're doing knee and thigh-high in the streets. I know people that, some people might have made fun of the truck, but now you can see the value in that truck, trying to bring our citizens to safety. Fire Department, just trying to do what we can to clear roadways to make sure that we're still able to respond. We had power poles, especially on the beachside, they often spark from the salt air. But we had several poles catch fire, and the ones that were not live, we could apply water to. And then, of course, the army of power trucks we've seen, from the ones that we housed at the stadium in preparation to take care of our own to the ones you've seen out at Speedway and area hotels. This is from our Disaster Recovery Center, Disaster Relief Center that was set up by local organizations and supported by the city. And for our storm debris-related activity, beginning Monday, October 21st, curbside pickup will begin for all storm debris-related material. And then Saturday, October 19th, there'll be a self-haul debris center opening. It'll be open from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven days a week. This is located at Lot 7, more or less the intersection of LPGA and Clyde. And we're asking residents to enter off of LPGA. It will be well-signed, and there's a flyer available in everyone's newsletter and information's available online. This will be for unbagged yard debris only. We're not accepting appliances, construction material, or furniture, or anything else. Just unbagged yard debris only. We'll begin to get the other items as they do the curbside pickup. If you are, need assistance, and you have a friend or neighbor picking up your debris, there's a form online that verifies that you are, in fact, a resident, and that this person is bringing the debris to the site for you. Again, this is all critical because we talk about FEMA reimbursements and all the financial assistance that goes. We can't do it for commercial haulers. We have to do it for our residents alone. Other than that, it was one for the books. I hope we don't have to do it again, at least not this year. And I know we all feel the pain of our residents and throughout the state of Florida. Florida's had a horrible summer, to say the least. But I'm confident in seeing our city staff and all their efforts and the above and beyond. They leave their families. They come here to service our community, and they take it serious, and they do it with pride. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to commission comments. I'm not sure who was first, because it wasn't on...
I am.
Reed.
I'd like to thank Drew for that presentation so that the citizens can see what we've done, and thank staff for the sacrifices that they made leaving their families to ensure the safety of us. And just my heart goes out and my prayers go out to those who did suffer great loss, be it material or even if it was a family member. My thoughts are with you. The community meeting that Commissioner May and myself and the Chief of Police are hosting is rescheduled to Thursday, October 24th. There's a flyer inside of your newsletter, manager's newsletter. It will be on the 24th at 6:00 p.m. at Masters Domain Church. It's primarily for those in the area of Fremont, MLK, Seagrave, and what's the street on the golf course? Shady Place, that area. There's been some concerns over there. And Commissioner Paris, she's on the other side of the golf course, but she wants to join us as well. And so that's on the 24th. Next weekend is BCU's Homecoming, and this weekend is Biketoberfest. So the city moves on in the midst of things. And just wanted to say that last weekend, I had the privilege of attending Commissioner Strickland's nuptials, and it was absolutely beautiful. That concludes my comments.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to thank the city manager, the city staff. I felt very prepared. This was my first, I don't know if you wanna say official hurricane as a commissioner. So as everyone knows, I ask a lot of questions, and they were able to answer a lot of them. A lot of my residents flooded for a second time in less than two years, and I'm very devastated about this. Someone had sent a message today saying that, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers study that we're doing is, you know, buzzword. It's not a buzzword. I just wanna let people know that the work is being done behind the scenes to try to find a solution. I was also speaking to Drew, and there's a vulnerability assessment for the city of Daytona Beach, which I believe Utilities is doing with Eric Smith. And that will help the city also get more grants to see what we could do for flooding. So I just wanna, can we confirm that to that it's being done? Because that's really important. The other thing is, with the devastation was also aftermath. And one of the reasons that I love Daytona Beach is that Drew mentioned it also about residents helping each other. So I just wanted to thank a couple of people. I went around with Crisis Cleanup that it's a non-for-profit organization, and it's all volunteer work that help people with either muck out, cutting down trees, helping with tarp, or moving debris. And we were able to go around on Sunday, and then they had gotten a call, and we went to one of the senior facilities. And when we got there, I just can't believe like how many people were there that brought water, brought pizza, brought food, brought flashlights, brought ice. I mean, it was so well-organized, and it was just like, don't worry, we got this. We're gonna get it, we're gonna get people help. And we were able to help over 80 residents. And I just wanna thank Chelsea from Fox Mattress, Keisha from the NAACP, Tanya from Helping Hands, and Maria from the Crisis Cleanup, and also the residents. They were just so helpful to give us information, who was in the room, who was not, who's here, who isn't, what they needed help with. They brought generators. People were able to chart their electric chairs. I mean, this is what, like I said, I love about Daytona Beach, that everyone is very helpful. Then I also wanted to thank Gabby and Ann from North Beach Surf Shack Food Truck. They came to Bevel Road Church of Christ yesterday, and they were giving out free food to the people from Fairway Estates and helping out with that. And also, the church was giving away cakes and bread for people that needed it. So I just wanted to say a very special thank you. I know our city is very resilient, and we'll get through this together. I also attended yesterday to give a proclamation at the Conklin Center, Conklin Davis Center for the Blind. And it was just very humbling. We did an exercise that we were blindfolded with our white canes to bring awareness to our visually impaired residents of the city. And we crossed Dunn and White Street. And the person that was leading me is a resident from the Conklin Davis Center, a Christian, and he's in his 20s, and he's been with the center for two years. And so he helped me cross that street without being able to see, and it was very eye-opening. So just please, be very careful when you see a visually impaired crossing. Just know that we have a lot of residents. So just drive slowly and pay attention. I mean, I guess that's for everybody. I just also wanted to say why I voted against the trust fund. I know I didn't say anything, but it just didn't have enough information. And I know that a lot of good things And I just can't make a decision without knowing what the backup information, where the money's coming from, where it's going to. So hopefully, when we get the follow-up information, I can make a better decision. And as always, if any of my residents need anything, I'm available. Just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
You know, in years past, the last two storms prior to Milton, they were not technically hurricanes. They were named tropical storms. They had reduced their power by the time they got here. This time, we had a legitimate Category One hurricane blow over us. And I think our city was as prepared as we could be under the circumstances. And I don't think we thank our boots-on-the-ground people that worked for this city, that were out there in that storm and shortly after that storm, for the work that they do. We have, we have great people that work here. And the ones that get the credit are not the boots-on-the-ground, and those people don't get enough credit for that, I don't think. They're away from their families, wading around in water and wind blowing and trees falling. And I don't think they ever get the, get the credit that they should. And especially with this storm, since it was a Category One. I think we did as well as we could do, considering the amount of rainfall, the amount of wind, and our location in, if you will, Hurricane Alley. You know, we have these every couple of years or every few years. I was here for Charlie back in '04. Nobody was prepared. Charlie turned right and came across the straight in just a matter of, the state in just a matter of hours. And we weren't prepared. And I think, I think Charlie did a little more damage at that time than what, what we have this time. I'm just glad that we didn't lose any lives here, and that we're, we'll recover from this. As far as the Army Corps of Engineers and flooding goes, you know, we, we've tried for years to get them here, and we finally got them here. And I get phone calls, what are you doing about the flooding? At this point, if we spend money to do something about the flooding, and it's contrary to what the Army Corps of Engineers do, they'll all be right back in, on the phone and that podium right there going, you wasted our money. We need to be patient and wait on the Army Corps of Engineers' decision and what their suggestions are, because we're probably going to need all the money we can get, plus some for whatever they come up with at this ti, at that time. Just happy everybody survived the storm. And that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner May.
Okay, so I understand the fatigue. I get the fatigue. I was, I'm right there with you. So on, Xavier, could you put some pictures up, please? So it started off for me on Wednesday, when I asked the city manager if we were doing EOC work, and he said, you're going to be there. And I said, okay, great. That's wonderful. So I went to the Emergency Operations Center at the police station. And there I got to watch our new Emergency Operations Manager, Director Aaron Spencer. Fantastic background, military background, as a therapist. For me, he's super calm, composed, and mobilizes when he needs to. Then on top of it, we also had Battalion Chief A. Chaney. And so I thought that was really good, really well organized. So if you look up here, the way it works is, all of these divisions have people sitting there the entire time during the storm, monitoring it. When somebody calls in on the call center, or they call 911, it goes directly to one of these areas, and they can immediately give you an answer. Not only that, but all they have to do is ask their teammate next to them, what's going on? And the information is that quick, so the person gets a response right away. I told them that I was a therapist and I dealt with traumas, they put me on the call center. So I got to field some calls as well. And what I realized, that we have a couple of issues that I discussed with Mr. Spencer, and I said I would go ahead and bring it up. So these are some of the concerns I had. People use the EOC, sorry, they use 911, but we have an EOC number. So all the calls dispatch 911s. The question is, do people know about the EOC number? Because there are people manning that call center as well. And they're in the room, you don't see them. They're in the room directly behind, and they have the same access and flow to information. So just marketing that number a little bit more efficiently. And then also, while I was there, the power generator went out, which meant that all the monitors, all the information, and all the cameras died for 45 minutes to an hour, roughly. And that, to me, was unacceptable in a storm. And so, by the way, that's where I slept. That was my sleeping accommodations. And so we actually just took naps. And also, the sleeping accommodations, I had an office, but the people working there, you don't get to leave. So you take turns, you take naps, like an hour and a half, two hours. You don't sleep through the night, you just sort of hang out a little bit. But they were sleeping on a gym mat, and that was it. So I mean, if they could have, I mean, even the little brown thing I had, even if that's something like that, it would be more comfortable. There are no windows in there, so you don't know concept of time. So if you're waking up after an hour, you get up, it's 2:00 in the morning, you stay up for another hour and a half, you go back to sleep for 30 minutes, you get up. Because that's kind of what I was doing. Because I wanted to see what happened during the storm itself. So keep going, that's Mr. Spencer. Okay, then, that was one event done. That's out of sequence. Can you go back to the FPL event, please, on Saturday? Just keep scrolling. Xavier, keep going, 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 going. Keep going, going, going. Don't stop. Okay, there we go. Okay, so that was on Wednesday, Thursday. I stayed there till Thursday afternoon, and I couldn't go home. I couldn't get over the bridge. Just so you know, I live on beachside, and I couldn't actually get over the bridge. My car is too tiny to go over the bridge. So over here, we have FPL. So I get a call from FPL rep, Linda Webster. I was calling her about a resident who was having issues. And turns out that the president of FPL, Amando Pimentel Jr., to the left, was in town flying in. So I met with him, and the first thing he said to me was, what do you need? And I said, I'll take all the cleaning supplies you have. So FPL right away spoke with their community outreach person, Kate, who's on the left. And they went ahead and gave us cleaning supplies that we could be used at the Food Brings Hope event the following Monday. And then some cleaning supplies went some other places as well. At that event was myself, Amando Pimentel, the president of FPL, and then also Senator Wright. There was also Travis Scott from Ormond Beach. There was the Chamber from Ormond Beach. We also had, sorry, one second. We also had Council on Aging, which I thought was important with the seniors. We had Halifax Health. So all the organizations that work with large groups of people came to meet the power person, because we wanted to know, when would most of our power be up? And so at that time, they told me about the apps they had going. You put in your address, and right away, you can tell when your power is coming up. And at that time, they had 10,000 more residents to help in Daytona Beach. It's also broken down by county, which I thought was fantastic, right? They gave us supplies, but they were also heading out west to give them more assistance because they real. So thank you, FPL, for a fantastic job. I appreciate that. Then that Monday, so could you go back, please? So Monday, I was working with Food Brings Hope behind the scenes. I brought in the FPL people. We had the Salvation Army there. Food Brings Hope had the food. They had Salvation Army. The county was there as well. By the way, on the Saturday meeting, I met the county EOC person, told him we needed things too. They showed up at the Food Brings Hope event also and brought supplies. That is the executive director of Food Brings Hope, and those were the boxes of dry goods that we're giving out, in addition to boxes of fresh fruits and vegetables, in addition to water bottles, in addition to cleaning supplies, in addition to meals, et cetera. It was a fantastic event. Cars, can you go, please? Cars were lined up around the block. We also have in the background, we have people there from Bethune-Cookman, we had staff. Their athletic teams were out of town at that particular time. They sent them all away for safety. But the golf team was there, and they were handing things out. Switch, please. FEMA was also there. That was very important, that FEMA started to come out on Monday already, right? That was, can you go back one? That was the Campbell School. Based on that meeting, we immediately organized, within 24 hours, another food event with Salvation Army, cleaning supplies, Red Cross, and FEMA at Campbell. Within 24 hours, they were at Campbell Middle School, which was another really good event. Keep going, please? That's the principal of Campbell. Salvation Army, thank you so much for giving us all those buckets of cleaning supplies. Keep moving. Campbell, stop right there. That's the county, that's the care package, one of the care packages they provided. But they also have an interesting program. It's called Social Workers in Libraries. So you can actually go to the library, and if you needed a casework, you can go to libraries through two of them listed, you can go and get some help. I also found a mental health group called Empower, and they provide mental health for people on Medicare and Medicaid. Super low cost, everybody's eligible, very good group. Keep going. Home was there handing out food, and they also had water. See the cars? There were cars wrapped around the block, all the way to the back of Bethune-Cookman. It was a complete block of cars just waiting to come into the food serving area. Keep going. Keep going, keep going. Okay, there was one more of Campbell, please. It had the disaster relief there. So the next day, FEMA came with the team, and this is Tuesday, they went to Campbell Middle School. We also had the Red Cross there handing out hot meals for people in the community. And then we also had the Salvation Army there. So all in all, what I really appreciated about this event was that it worked the way it should. The city took care of safety and cleanup. Excellent job. FPL came in, the corporations came in, and best of all, the nonprofits, they showed up. They were still feeding churches in the new Zone 3, the expanded Zone 3. They were continuing to do food service. I have some churches doing it seven days. They're going to be stopping on Friday, two meals a day. That particular church on Loomis, they, Pastor Williams, they had 500 people one day for lunch, and another 300 for dinner. And they managed to get food from Wawa, Salvation Army, Four Rivers. Everybody pitched in to help. So the system worked the way it should. Nonprofits, working with local government, local government working with county, county working with state through FEMA, and then other entities popping in, and then all supported by volunteers. So thank you so much to all of us in Daytona Beach. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping to be invited to the EOC Center for the next major event, because I was, I don't mean weather, because EOC operates during all our events, during all our events. And that was impressive.
No. My first thought is-
That was impressive.
We don't want any more. We want, we want EOC to be closed.
No more, no more event, no more weather, but definitely impressive.
Just close, close them. Yeah, okay.
Hi, Ann.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Public Works, Utilities, Daytona Beach Fire Department, Daytona Beach Police Department. They did amazing job, even after the storm. I've been seeing Utilities and Public Works all over the place. And during the storm, all the information that was relayed to us, and also from the county, it really helped. And actually, I think most of my community, we were up 24 hours, because we do have a lot of private sites in my community, sitting there checking on each other all night long and giving out the information. So it was kind of nice. But get to other things. Mr. Gross, expired PDs, and I'm going to move it around a little bit, but expired PDs, I guess that was on the planning board, I believe, September 26th. But I think that meeting was canceled. So when something goes through Planning Board, it's automatically in effect, because it's going to be coming through the commission. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have a pending ordinance doctrine that basically says, if something's been put on the agenda for the planning board, once it's on the agenda, as long as it's proceeding through review, we won't issue any development per se, violate, or withhold.
Okay, so, and what is being changed on there? They have to go, if it's an expired PD, they have to go through a complete new rezoning, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So since the planning board was canceled, it's still in effect, since it didn't actually go through the planning board yet?
Well, it's on the agenda now, also, for next meeting.
Yes. Okay. That was my question. Okay, and I had one more question for you. I think we go by Robert's rules. And are we going to bring something officially back because of some of the stuff that went on at the last commission meeting, reading anonymous letters and stuff like that? Because I have some on my tablet, I could read right now, but I'm not going to waste any of the residents' time. And I would just like that to come back, if we are going to go by Robert's rules.
I had drafted, after a discussion some months ago, a modified version of Robert's rules that's particularly appropriate for small government bodies, because Robert's rules is really made for large legislative bodies. I've been missing distributing that. I'll distribute that to the commissioners individually, and then you all can decide whether you want to adopt those.
But, yeah, but that will not affect commission comments?
No.
No.
All right, okay.
But on this, I'm just saying, when our agenda came to us, actually, this agenda on our tablets, it actually states Robert's rules on there, because Letitia reads some of that. So if we could get something back, I'd appreciate that. Another thing is, our state lobbyist. I have a question. I would like to know what we pay, how long the contract is, and when is it up for renewal again? And the reason why, I've been looking into this, and when the state budgets a litigation from legislator, legislating, this is not talking about any grants through, through other agencies. And I started looking at this, and we need a lot of stuff. Daytona's the second-largest city in Belushi County. And I feel like we don't get our share as we should. When I was looking at this, in 2021, we had no money from the state for a litigation through the legislature. And 2022, we put a request in, and I might be wrong on some of this, but I believe I'm right. So if I am, please, someone correct me. On 2022, we put in for a reuse pump station, 90, for $250,000. Nothing. We didn't get that. Okay? And then I think Senator Wright put in for the Veteran Museum. I didn't even ask for that. I thought he was turned down. And 2023, we put in for four, I think it was 4. something, 4.1 million dollars for, oh, no, it was $5 million, excuse me, for a Bellevue extension design, which was vetoed. Also, we put in, I think it was 4.5, for a public water-related enhancement, something, which it was vetoed. And 2024, nothing. I mean, so they were talking about four years, no money, a lot of vacation from the state. Okay? And this is not grants. So, and it's only healthy for competition. And so what I'm asking, and Rambo, who we have, is, is good. I mean, he's well-known, you know, the well-known Dave and Melissa, they're a married couple, but I also heard Melissa works for another lobbyist. And I do know how the lobbyists think. I've been to Tallahassee, I've watched things go on. But I feel like for competition, it's healthy if, when this is up, we should do RFP and see who else we get. And I'm just going to give you some examples here. Pittman is lobbyist for Port Orange. And actually, I watched them recently, and supposedly, they've gotten them $4.3 million in the last five years. Oakley, Oak Hill is so small. Their budget is, I think, a million and two. Well, the last legislative session, they got $900,000. They've got money for six years in a row. New Smyrna, six years in a row, have gotten money. I have been to other cities, when the checks were being handed out to the other cities, I've watched, but I wasn't there for that. I was there for some other reason, for my veteran thing. I watched Deltona get a check, and actually, this is both in the last couple of years. Deltona, South Daytona, Port Orange, and I think I was in New Smyrna. So I just feel like, and we have an in-house government affairs, which is Hardy, and I know we pay him a lot of money, but I'm not sure how much we'll pay him, Rambo, but I think it's time that we kind of look at that. And for policy, yeah, I mean, Hardy's good at giving us the policy, but we also need the money, too. And if our lobbyist, state lobbyist, is not doing that, because, and also, we just need to look at that. And Feacher, when we are actually, Mr. Feacher, excuse me, when we are actually putting something in at the state, I think it'd be great if the commissioners know what we're actually putting into, because we can actually lobby, too. When you put that in, it's a three-page letter, I mean, three pages that need to be filled out. I think it's something that we need to know about as well. So when we go to Tallahassee, we can talk to our senators and our state representatives and say, hey, our city's putting this in, we need, we need it. You know what I'm saying?
We actually don't put them in until you all approve it at a commission meeting.
Right, but I think you need to give us the exact information and make sure we have it, so when it's, when they're up there, we can say, and call them and say-
We actually provide the-
Because four years, no money here. I mean, it's time to look at a lobbyist that's going to do us something, just like our federal lobbyist. I'm not sure who that is. I would like to know how much we pay him as well. Because I know the city had put in for the Army Corps of Engineer for many years, over and over. Okay. I mean, I'm not up here saying anything, I'm trying to brag or anything, but I went to Michael Wallace, and I went to Ernie, and I drove them nuts. I went to every meeting, given them packages and everything, and begged them to put that in. Yes, they put it in for me, they got turned out. I went around and did it to them again. They would sit and laugh at me, because we would be out of function, and I'm making them hold these packages, and Ernie's saying, what am I going to do with this? And I said, you're going to hold it, and you need to put it in. And that's, and we got that Army Corps of Engineer, not 50% match, but the whole entire thing. So we need to look at who, how much we'll pay in these people and do some healthy competition, because, I mean, it's sad, four years. And we have infrastructure, we have a lot of needs in Daytona, and especially, when we're having to raise taxes, when the state needs to be giving us some money. When they're giving everybody else money around here, and we're the second-largest city, we actually bring in all the money for the tourists as well. So I would like to know, when they're up for a contract, if my colleagues agree with me, we need to put our RFP out and, and do some competition here.
May I, Commissioner Cantu?
Yes.
I agree with you 1,000%. We do get our legislative priorities. We are informed about it. Even when I went to Tallahassee, met with our representative, Tom Leek, asked that that request be looked at, and we were still denied. So I don't really know what else we should be doing.
And I can tell you another thing.
Okay.
I, politics might be a little bit of it, but it's not all of it. It's like an audit that we have going on for years now. We need to stuff up our game as well for our residents. And I know these people. I know them very well. And I know what's going on. But also, if we're going to be paying big bucks for a lobbyist, this lobbyist need to be doing- And I know these people. I know them very well, and I know what's going on. But also, if we're going to be paying big bucks for a lobbyist, this lobbyist need to be doing us, doing their job up there, not us. They're the ones that's supposed to be filling out those three pages, and they're the ones that's supposed to be up there. They know everyone and demanding this money for us. So if my colleagues agree, I would like to, when they're up, I would like to put a RFP out. I mean, they might be the best one, but I like to listen to all of them and see what they're going to do for us. When we already pay big bucks for in-house, I mean, that can give us all the policy we need, and most of us, we look it up anyway, the policy.
I have no problem with changing lobbyists if that's in our best interest. Staff to tell us why it's not. We've had Rambo since I've been around. I certainly know that we're not getting our fair share from Tallahassee. I don't disagree with that. I do believe it's more political than that, but that's, you know, I don't even talk about it, so.
And I agree, like I said, some of it, I think, is politics, some of it is.
Somebody can be in somebody's plate, like you were in their plate.
Right, like I went to Ernie, I get it.
So.
I get it.
When you're eating, you're just like.
Right, but at the same time, watching some of these lobbyist groups, because I know some of them, watching them, some of them are not, are, let me say, Republican and Democrat, if I have to say that, up here, okay, they need to be up there fighting for this money for us, too.
Yeah.
So.
I, Letitia is trying to look up when you all, as a commission, decided to go with Rambo because they were probably in our.
Oh, I know we.
That took place. But also, I will say that we did get funding, we got $10 million from the D E P for our new fire station.
That's, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's what I just said, said on there, not grants from agencies. I'm talking about actual money, budget allotcation from the state legislator. We have not received anything in four years. Yes, we have gotten grants from agencies, but that is not from the state. And that's, that is absolutely great, I'm happy we got that. But that, we are not getting our share of money from legislated. We get vetoed on projects, and it needs to stop.
So a few years back, when we were having issues with the stadium, when we thought that the minor league team was going to leave, recall that? The Tortugas, we thought the minor leagues were going to leave Daytona Beach at the time. There was a big uproar. Daytona Times got involved, they wrote articles. Bob Lloyd got involved, he was the counsel over at Brown and Brown. The Chamber had a trip, which was the Volusia Days Chamber, I went on that. And every single time, the only thing I talked about along with Bob Lloyd was Daytona Beach, the stadium, the stadium, the stadium, the minor leagues, et cetera. And doing that over and over again, I think was very, very effective. Having all the business people there represented, saying the same thing over and over again to every single rep that they set us up with, I think was good. So we might want to consider not just doing the legislative part with the lobby person, but if we have time as a commission to go with the Chamber, if I say, Mr. Cameron was there, pointing to him, because I followed him around, he gave me an education, he gave me an education while I was, I just followed him everywhere he went. I think it's a good idea, they have an event every single year, I think you went, Ms. Perez, with them?
I did.
Yeah. They, they do it every single year, and I think that as a group, if we can take the time off from our respective positions, I think it would be important that we go and speak with people while we're there and, and do that. I think it's a good idea, if we have time to go.
But we are, we as colleague commissioners up here, we need to be lobbying as well, like she said, for what we want. I mean, and pushing our senators and reps for money, because when we got cities getting money every, yeah, don't get me wrong, some cities are, one year will get more than the following year. But when they're getting money every single year, and we're going on four years with no money, there's a problem.
Okay.
So, what was my next thing? I guess that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Just a few things, and that is, I want to thank chief, police chief, and I want to thank our fire chief, because whenever one of my constituents called, they needed to get out, chief was right on top of things. And my area was not projected to flood the way that it did. That was one of the first things that I checked, and it was not projected to flood, and we flooded quite a bit. And I want to thank Chief Driscoll for coming around and picking me up and making sure I got the opportunity to see the things that my residents were talking about in their community that was going on. Also, I want to thank Nikisha Harris and Tanya Roan. Tanya continues to show up for her community, no matter what it is, her and Nikisha continues to show up from day one. They work 365 days working in the community. And so when one of the nursing homes needed them, they answered the call. And I want to thank them for that, because it was a nursing home in my zone, and they showed up. I appreciate that. The next thing that I want to talk about is our, we are having our Halloween. And it is going to be October 31st. So our Halloween trunk or treat, it is going to be sponsored by Commissioner Cantu, Commissioner Ken Strickland, and myself, and the Military Order of Purple Heart, Chapter 316. It's going to be from 6 to 8, and it's free for family, for all families. It's going to be at the City Island Park at the Jackie Robinson Stadium. So they're going to have food, hot dogs, drinks, costume contests, all kinds of stuff. And we would love for you all to bring the little people out. Oh, it's also sponsored, we're having a petting zoo. Sponsored by Waste Pro, which is something new, because we didn't have that last year. So that's going to be really awesome. So bring the little people out, it's going to be a great family day, a great family time to come on out and, and have some fun with us. Also, I got the opportunity to go to Commissioner Strickland's wedding, which was an absolute blast. We had a fun time, and it was a beautiful nuptial. So congratulations to him and his new bride. And I think the last thing is that we have some other things that are going to be coming up in Zone 5, as far as some new things going on in Neighborhood Watch, so keep looking out for that. And I think that's my comments for now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, one second. I just want to add something with regard to suggestions about the storm, suggestions, a couple more. Waste Pro, if they could have a hotline, I know we know their hours, if they could have a hotline, that would be super, right? The other thing is, the calls that I received, the calls that I received at E O C dealt with more space for pets, families with pets, didn't want to leave without a pet. And then also, there were some people who had very specific health issues. That meant they couldn't be in crowds. And so they chose to stay, because they would have to be in a shelter with lots of people. So having more facilities for entire families to kind of have some quarantine area for themselves if they need it, I think is also a good idea, if it's at all possible. Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'm going to be quick, because I have to get out of here in just a moment. Well, I, I, we have a, I've been around for a lot of storms, unfortunately. When I was first elected as a commissioner, I think it was maybe six, eight months after that, that we had our first storm. It was a spring, spring monsoon that flooded the community. And it seems as though ever since then, we've had major, and it was, it was horrible, it was horrific, storm. There had some substantial tornado damage in that storm and overwhelming flooding. And so the unfortunate reality is that this is the new normal in Daytona Beach and in many areas across Florida. But I, I, like this commission, do respect the residents' call and demand that says that we don't want this to be our normal, so we want you to do everything that you can to help to solve the problem. And I would encourage us to continue to, to do that as a commission and as a, as a county. And we do have a very strong county coalition, as well as municipalities. And so, and I have been on almost every, come, come at the storm from almost every angle that I know how to come at them as a mayor, in terms of feet on the ground and working it from different angles. But I just want us to continue to, to fight and let our residents know that we are fighting for them. I think this storm, like other storms, showed what we're made of, and the event that took place on Monday was an example of that. I have been in quite a bit of contact with Ms. Hussey, of Food Brings Hope, and told her, you have to be very proud of the work that was done in this particular storm with those agencies that came together. Did want to make certain that I made mention of the fact that tomorrow, that Jeep Beach will feed, once again, at South Turn, those who are struggling to get meals or having financial hardships with eating. They will serve at South Turn from 6 to 9 tomorrow. And they served on Monday, I think it was something like 500 meals. And, and as was illustrated, the line was overwhelming, but it worked flawlessly. So it was a great organizational effort and put together, you know, very, very professionally. And everything was done from a spirit and disposition of love and compassion. You know, nobody was yelling or fussing at anyone. There's a lot of patience and understanding that these storms bring about a great deal of stress for people, you know? And that's what I have learned over the years as mayor, is that the number one thing that you can, that I can do, is to try to abate folks' stress and pressure. And, and to answer the calls that they give you and to direct them and guide them in the right direction, bring the resources, but you have to speak a voice of calm over the community, which is, you know, what I personally try to do and what I see others doing, and is what I certainly try to do in social media. So, let's just keep working and thank each of you for all that you did during this time. And, and staff, we have an amazing staff. In the middle of the storm, of course, I, I did go to Springfield, Massachusetts, not during the storm, but after the storm was over, a few days later, for the induction ceremony for Vince Carter. And he did our community proud, acknowledged this as his birthplace and the place where he gained his, his wings for the game. And the state of Florida, to my knowledge, doesn't have five people inducted into the Basketball Hall of Fame. And so he was the highlight of the evening, and his speech was great, and his acknowledgement of this community was appreciated and on full display. And so we should be proud of the fact that we have helped him with his matriculation. This summer, we still anticipate having a Vince Carter Day in the community. We would like to highlight him for students and young people as the model of possibility for this community that he is, and for young people. Because he was, as I've said before, just a kid born here, but who took education seriously, was a drum major in school, and never a problem for his teachers or his coaches, for that matter. And so that's, and, and he's got a second life, a second career that he's building. And so we just want to hold him up as a model of possibility for our young people, that I believe that he is. And in, in conclusion, I want to thank the manager and his team for helping to keep me apprised and keep the information in my hands and helping me to be able to disseminate it in ways that I try to disseminate it to different people, because that's the bottom line, the most important thing we can do for people, I think, in a storm, is to, to get them the information and resources, both during and after. And one of the things I, I did mean to mention, it's about Vince Carter's speech, and I noticed it's about a spirit of service. During his speech, all he did was thank others, never used the personal pronoun really "I", "I, I, I, I", which is, you know, a positive way that you do things. I think Eleanor Roosevelt once gave a speech, an interview for two hours and never used the personal pronoun "I". And so let us continue to be a city that resonates in that way, where it's not about us, or, you know, as individuals, but what we can do collectively as a community. So thanks, and thanks for all the job done.
It was good, Mayor, to hear him say Desmond Sloan's name, one of our, one of our teammates here, that was one of his best friends and basketball player. So it was good to hear, hear him say it. So I'll mess with him for, every time I see him now. But they wanted to share that, so to provide an update for, December the 4th, we're going to ask Florida Housing Coalition to make the presentation. And December 18th, if we're able to get the information back and forth, work through with legal, we'll have it on the agenda for the funding mechanisms that we could have. Florida Housing Coalition, we're going to try to get them December 4th and have the Housing Trust come back on the 18th. I just want to say, thank something about some of our employees that were, was unique to me. We had an employee that came into the Cherry Center to work, and he did not know that his house was going to flood and that he could not get back to it. So he was at the Cherry Center with those who were evacuated, not knowing that his house had flooded, and he could not get back in. So he left his house for the police and fire to open up for those who evacuated. All pretty good, thinking life is going to be great. Goes to the Cherry Center, they, the fire department has someone come in at 3 o'clock. He gets up, he's at Cherry Center, 3 o'clock, it's ready to cook hot dogs, hamburgers, chips, and soup, and they tell him, you can't get back to your house. It's blocked off, and he's, I've seen him for two days, I was like, we need to put a shower at the Cherry Center. But he was there, but then a firefighter asked me, just, you know, out of the blue, how's everything going? I was like, I'm, I'm pretty good, didn't have power for two days. And I just, you know, joke, so everything's still with you and your people? And he's like, no, we have firefighters who flooded out. We took a 30-minute break, went to try to get our people out of our homes, tear our stuff, and they came right back to work. So they are our neighbors, too. City employees are our neighbors. And to see those, those two gentlemen, it really did something to me, like, why are you not home? Why are you not home with your family, your pets? So they came again. So I want to just thank the employees that, when the storm is coming, they know they're public servants. They've got to come to work. And when you see a firefighter that goes home, he sends his family away, picked up his pets, takes an hour break, guts out the bottom of his house, pulls out the carpet, puts it on the side of the road and said, I'm going right back to work. And his comments to me were, I am doing the Lord's work for the residents of Daytona Beach. My house, I'll get to it. And I'm going. I seen your place. He showed me the pictures. And so that's the thing, that we do have good employees, that you never know what they're going through. And I tell, tell citizens all the time that don't look at them as just public servants. They are your neighbors as well. They just so happen to work for the city of Daytona Beach, but they're flooded out, their houses, their families removed to other areas, or some of their families had to go pick up. So we do have a good group of staff, and so as I talk to many of them, I am grateful that we have the mayor and the commissioners that understand the value of the public service that works for us, knowing that the heat that you all get, that we may not always be doing enough. And you still support the efforts that we're doing. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
No.
Okay. Commissioner Parrish, would you please take my seat? To the residents, I will listen to your remarks via social media.
I'm gonna go ahead. Should I go ahead?
May I?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody, we're at the public comment.
Yes, thanks.
We're at the public comment part of the meeting. When you come up, you'll have three minutes, please state your name and address, and I just request if the commission has any comments, to wait to be addressed before they speak. Thank you.
Okay, our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Eddie Lake.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue, a couple of FYIs. Miss Cantu, last night, the county redid their lobbyist, $42,000 for the federal, $100,000 for the state. We've been a donor city, I brought this up 30 years ago. Echo, we've contributed this past 15,000, $15 million, we got to spend $5 million. Echo, for this forever, $0. We put in about $18 million, we have $0 back for our contribution. Sales tax, we put in, the last time I checked, over $115 million, we got back $6 million. So we donate $100 million in sales tax each and every year. What she's saying is true, and the mayor's never thought of it as important enough to take it up as an issue. So to lose $100, $200 million a year in city funds is a lot to lose, and we can do a lot with $200 million. So I think Ms. Cantu is correct, we should look into it and see what we can do about getting some of the money that we really, really should get. With regard to the funding for housing, if you remember the NEXIS study, if you've read it, why does 85% of our residents leave the city to go to work? Why does 85% of nine counties come into our city to work? That doesn't make sense. Why do people, we've got somebody from Tampa coming in to work in our city, from Lake, Brevard, St. John's, Duval County are coming in to work here, and then 85% of our employees are leaving. Who are these people that live here and work elsewhere? I'm guessing they're the ones that need the affordable housing. They're the ones that are living in our hot housing. There's not enough jobs of that stature here, so who do you think is working for the jobs in Pontelet, the shores? Ormond? Their hotel people come from the city of Daytona Beach. Their convenience store people come from the city of Daytona Beach. We're supplying that portion of the population. That's why I'm saying it's so important on this affordable housing to know who needs it in our community. I think that's terribly important. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eddie Lake. I think he might have left. So our next speaker is Evelyn Rodriguez, and on deck is Father Phil, who also left. On deck is Thomas Russell.
Okay, I thought Mr. Morris will be, last time, Mr. Morris. Evelyn Rodriguez, Molly Road, Daytona Beach. Thought he was gonna bring back, the thing about the grant monies for the permits and licensing. I have an idea. You could construct a third floor at City Hall, use that money to construct the third floor, put permits and licensing upstairs. Then we could bring back code enforcement back into City Hall where they were originally, and that'll save you money on the rents in that Palmetto office, and that would also save money on all the furniture and equipment you have to keep replacing every time it floods. Since you passed this affordable housing thing, I hope to see that maybe those CRA housing developments that you're planning on will be affordable. Also, on that note, I have another idea. The city attorney can foreclose on the property located at 1047 Madison. It was a home for boys over 30 years ago, and the property has been an eyesore for the last 20 years. There's currently running code fines on it. The property must be more than like six acres. The city can develop an upscale apartment complex on it and make it affordable. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Russell, and on deck is Kenneth Hunt. Mr. Russell, I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name is Tom Russell, 630 North Beach Street, the real North Beach Street. And I apologize for the last time running a little over, everybody, I got a little excited. I'm still excited. Does everyone know where North Beach Street is? Does everybody know where Root Canal is?
I eat lunch.
Do you know where it is, sir?
Yes.
Okay. You know where it is. You know it, okay? It flooded, it, once again. In that area, there is a CRA, and that's my beef. The CRA is not being used properly to help the people that own buildings in that area. That CRA is mostly commercial. I am, as best I can figure out, the only person who owns a building there that lives in Daytona Beach. I may be wrong. Therefore, we're not representative. What's happened here is, this money's going into a kitty someplace. I really just don't care what you do with the other ones, but I'd like to get money to redo my inside of my building, which I have already done two or three times. We took in 24 inches of water, we now have to go in there, tear down all the drywall, mildew-proof it, and, you know, who cares? You know, the expense of moving everything out, getting things from not being flooded and damaged, and I'm not the only one. I mean, that whole street is full of commercial properties that get absolutely no help from the CRA, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, has no advisory staff. And what my understanding is, the city manager and the mayor are the ones over here, and the city commission is the board of directors that votes on it. So since it has no advisory staff, and they've slid it over here to the downtown CRA, all right? This is all kind of muddled up. I drove by the new apartment buildings going up, and lo and behold, they're about as high as this from the fill, from the road. Where do you think all that water's gonna go? And I got 38 seconds left. And I hate to beat on this horse, but that money should be, we weren't offered any grants to help waterproof our buildings. It's our money, we're paying into this thing, and it's being, excuse me, piddled away, doing something else. It certainly isn't helping the people that have buildings. I think there's six homes located in this area. Other than that, it's strictly commercial. The river stuff isn't a problem, they've all been built lately, and I got two seconds, and thank you very much.
Okay, one second, sir.
Give me hell.
Excuse me. One second, just one second, just one second. Could we please address, thank you, could we please address the question of, is this particular area, this business eligible for the $50,000 that we are doing? So we have, we do have things available, they've been available, people have been getting these loans, zero interest for loans, I believe, and if you want information about this for your business, you can get that, and you would speak with Ms. Phoebe, but this has been an ongoing program for a few months now. Maybe you were unaware of it, but it's, you're eligible for it.
Yeah, that's how I'd be aware of it.
So turn around, sir, turn around, Ms. Phoebe, raise your hand. Sir, turn around. That's the woman you speak to. But there is help for you, there is help.
But how?
You speak with her, she's gonna help you.
No, I'm just speaking to her now, but do you think anybody else there knew about it?
Mr. Russell? Yes, people have been getting the grants. Commissioner May?
They're on the inside track then. How, how would they notify you?
Hi. We will have somebody contact you, or you could speak to the CRA agent over there.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Kenneth Hunt, and on deck is Ted Hordicki.
Good evening, Kenneth Hunt, 250 South Palmetto. Hurricane did do quite a bit of damage to the downtown area, I have three businesses there. Two of them was substantially damaged, but fortunately, we're gonna be open and operational tomorrow when we have guests coming in as well as the entertainment. So thank you for the resources and everything else. I also wanted to thank the commissioners for your vote of confidence in regards to me being elected to the Downtown Development Association. Appreciate that. And also wanted to mention about the resources that are available, being the chair of the Downtown Redevelopment Board, the Downtown Redevelopment Committee for the city has done significant changes in that regards, as far as funding. So they've done quite a bit of work, because in the past, there was minimal amount of funds that were available for various repairs, but $50,000 can go a long way nowadays. In the past, it might have been $1,500, $3,000. So kudos to Ken and his, his team and Phoebe as well, so definitely connect to her, and just wanted to give kudos to all those who are involved in the hard work that you are doing, and it is making a difference.
Mr. Hunt, can you provide the address to your business? You said that's gonna be real.
250, 250 South Palmetto.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to know what the three are. I know Hunt House.
Yeah, which is two vacation rentals, two separate vacation rentals, and then there's Zanzibar Blue, which we had a foot and a half of water down there, and, yeah, in the basement, right. So, you know, we didn't know what to do, so we were down there, you know, wetbacking and everything else. We had sump pumps, but sometimes a sump pump would get clogged up, so they had to go buy a new and a larger sump pump. So we were able to get it done, and the entertainment, we just had them outside, which was fine, making adjustments. However, you know, with the support of the community and my team, you know, to be able to, to be open tomorrow for Bike Week and have individuals come from outer state, still be able to support and take care of, yeah, yeah, that's the.
That's okay. Thank you. I kept asking you questions, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, it was their fault.
It's their fault.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ted Hordicki, and on deck is Adalicia Aburuz.
Ted Hordicki, 113 Braddock Avenue. Ann Mube got out of here, she gave me the task to come up and invite the commissioners to the October Bike Week cookout for the police department. So we're gonna be feeding Friday and Saturday, we feed from 11:00 to about 6:00, 6:30. So we'd like to invite, you can come out early, chop some onions, help get the tarp on the tent, it's a little windy out there. But it's a good time, and the police really enjoy it, they can't go anywhere, they're locked in, but you could sit around, and I'm even putting a bucket out, if you put a donation, then it's get out of jail free card. Word is shot. But I'd like to see you come out, because the police really appreciate it, and it's through your generous contributions and the contributions from the citizens that pay for this. So I'd like you to come out and enjoy. That's it. Two minutes left. And by the way, that CRA is very helpful, and in fact, I was back there thinking about that, the guys building, flooding. If they're putting windows in old buildings, yeah, they should be able to do it, I think that's great. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adalicia, is it Aburuz?
Good evening, my name is Adalicia Aburuz, 827 Cottles Circle. I'm not sure if I'm even at the right place, but I'm gonna shoot my shot. Avenue Mobile Coffee Trailer, and I'm here to ask permission to park at 310 Gene Street at the empty lot, next to that second building you guys have there. I've been speaking with Mr. Keith Willis and Ms. Valerie downstairs, I'm trying to figure out how I can get this permission to park there, and I was given a sample contract by them, it was emailed to me, and then I was told to come here to one of the meetings, and I guess present myself, before I can have that final contract. I would like to station my trailer there four days a week from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM in hopes to sell my Cuban coffee specialties. Our community is in need of more coffee shop options and diverse offerings. Coffee by Keta aims to bridge the gap between coffee lovers and fast, convenient morning coffee. We offer authentic Cuban espressos and specialty drinks accompanied by quick bites and snacks to help your morning going. Our tagline, "It's not just coffee, it's a lifestyle." That's pretty much the motto for Coffee by Keta. As a Cuban native, espresso has always been at the epicenter of our community, signifying a moment to pause and gather around everyone. Coffee time is a shared moment where families and friends gather to enjoy the simple experience of togetherness over coffee. Since I can remember, I've always wanted to have a space for that, for togetherness, for unity, and for shared moments over coffee. Coffee by Keta aims to be that space, if I could just get permission to park somewhere.
Can you shed some light on that? City manager?
Yeah. I'm really good with the redevelopment staff, to go through the process of Gene Street, is that, that's our old police station?
Yes.
Okay, so we just need to go through.
Right on orange.
Really, there's a process of just coming in, so, do you have our information?
Mr. Feacher? Yep. Our staff has worked with Parks and Rec to draft the agreement that, that the young lady's talking about, the commission would need to give the permission for them to license the use of that property. I wasn't aware, in that discussion, that we were talking about the old police station, and I'm not sure if it, we'll, we'll bring something, we'll, we'll work with staff to bring something back for the commission to review.
But before we do that, because we have to make sure, the zone, I wasn't aware that you were working with staff on it, so we'll, we'll contact you and work our way through it, and see how we can help you make your dream happen.
Thank you so much. Awesome, thank you so much.
And that was my final speaker for the evening.
Thank you, and good night, Daytona Beach.